Hello, everyone. Welcome, everyone joining us here in council chambers this evening. Thank you to Kim from BevCam. Are we ready to roll, Kim?
We're rolling.
We're rolling. Does it matter that I don't see myself on the screen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I thought we weren't ready to... No, I thought we weren't ready to go.
I forgot to turn them on.
All right.
One moment, we'll talk right now.
Oh, great. Hi, there we are. Okay. So with that, I will officially call to order special meeting of the Beverly City Council, Tuesday, September 27, 2022, 7:00 PM. A little bit tardy to call it to order. Ms. Kent, will you please call the roll?
Bowen, here. Crowley?
Here.
Feldman?
Here.
Housman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotondo?
Here.
St. Hiller?
Here.
Sweeney?
Here.
And Flowers?
Here.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kent. Counselor Crowley, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Counselor Crowley. So we are here this evening to take up Order 75 and Order 75A. This is our chance as a city council to consider the sort of a final step in the work that was done on the review and revision, proposed revisions, to the Beverly City Charter. So I do want to just pause for a moment and mention that the Chair of the Charter Review Committee, Tim Flaherty, is here with us this evening. Also, Julie De Silva, a member of that committee, is here with us. And Counselor Bowen, then Citizen Bowen, now Counselor Bowen, was a member of that committee as well. And so thank you to all of the committee members, everyone who worked so diligently on that. I know it was a labor of love in many ways, a long one. And also wanted to mention that our city solicitor, Stephanie Williams, is here this evening. Assistant Solicitor Beth Oldmixon. The Collins Center Representative Marilyn Contreras, who's been working with us, is here. Thank you, Ms. Contreras. In her regular seat, I will acknowledge that Ward Six School Committee Member, Lurinda Visnick, is with us in the back row. Welcome, Ms. Visnick. And our city council budget analyst, Jerry Perry, is also here with us. And Mr. Perry worked as a liaison in some ways between the council and the Charter Review Committee. So I guess I'll start there. I'd like to offer a few people a chance just to make any comments. Mr. Flaherty, I don't know if there's anything you'd like a moment to say. You don't have to. You're good? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your work.
I've done enough talking.
You've done enough talking. That's just fine. We thank you for being here. Mr. Perry, is there anything you'd like to say by way of a summary of the process or any notes for the council?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. It's good to see everybody. Long summer. I hope you had a good summer, and I'm back. I will be brief, Madam President. Very quickly, as many of you know, the former City Council put together a committee of the Charter Review, is done every 10 years, chaired by Mr. Flaherty and met several of the members. They have been meeting since approximately last February last year, so this has been a long process, longer than I had anticipated, but I think they did an excellent job. They got a lot done. They did a lot of work. We hired the Collins Centers, you know, that are with us here tonight to assist you in your discussions and deliberations. It's a very well-written document. One of the things I would suggest to the city as a whole, that should you pass this something tonight, which I hope you will, and forward it to the mayor for his review, the city needs to forward this to our legislative delegation, both Senator Lovely and Representative Paracello, for them to jointly file this as a home rule petition to the state legislature when the time comes. In my view, as your budget and more importantly tonight, management analyst, I think it's a really well-written document. This is my third or fourth iteration dealing with city charters and the Commonwealth. It is my belief as your budget analyst and management analyst that this is a document that improves the city charter as it's currently constituted. It will improve internal controls and systems, and as such, it certainly has my recommendations to you moving forward as your budget analyst. With that, Madam President, I think I'm done. I wish you well, and we all stand ready to assist you and your colleagues in any technical questions that you may have tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Perry, and thank you for your work with this process as well. Ms. Contreras, I don't know if there's anything that you wanted to have a moment to update... Okay, thank you. Solicitor Williams, as we get started, I don't know if there's anything that you would like to say by way of note certification? All right. Wait, that was easy. All right. Nobody but Mr. Perry had something to say. I don't know why that just struck me funny. I'm sorry, Mr. Perry. And I asked him to say it. I asked him to say it. So counselors, I think what you just received from Ms. Dixon or came passed down the line is just the specific legal affairs committee, subcommittee amendments that were recommended to the council pulled out. They are also incorporated in the document you have in front of you. And so these amendments, the vote from legal affairs to bring this back before the full council was to recommend the council approve with recommended amendments. This document just represents the recommended amendments for your ease of seeing them pulled out. Because of the way this process has gone, which to me feels somewhat analogous to our budget process, and by that I mean it was worked on by a very diligent committee, there was a public hearing, it came to the council, there was a public hearing, it was in legal affairs as well, where we, the committee of the whole and legal affairs had a chance to work on it. And so what we have before us now represents a document that we've had time to process, work on, and look over. So I'd like to handle our work through it at this final meeting in a somewhat similar matter to the way that we did the budget. And so what I'd like to do is first invite any counselors who may have a general comment or statement that you'd like to make, to raise your hand, and I would recognize counselors for any general comment. And then I will come back and ask counselors if there is anyone who's come prepared tonight to make a proposed amendment to any section. Let me know what section that would be. And then we'll work our way through those sections that people have a motion or are prepared to make a change. If people are not looking to make proposed changes tonight, then we'll take a motion to approve. So I'll start, as promised, with any... Are there any counselors who would like to make a general comment or statement about the charter or the document you have before you or the process? Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. And it will be just a brief one to echo the thanks already shared to the other members of the Charter Review Committee and to really highlight that this process we go through regularly just to check whether there's anything that is due for an update. We found some things that were very routine due for updates. We found some things that have been bubbling up around the city as areas to be discussed, and this process prompted really in-depth conversation on those things. I'm really proud of where we've landed and excited to get through the final steps in the process tonight. And just really want to encourage my colleagues, and I'll be doing this myself, to take this opportunity to share what's in the charter as the basis of our local government with our constituents and use it ourselves as sort of a reminder of what our role as a legislative body is, where those powers lie, where the accountability lies, and take this opportunity to really get that message out. As we turn to ordinance review next, that difference between this document, that's sort of the foundational document of who's in charge of what and how do big decisions get made, we're then going to turn to what are the actual laws of the city and what needs to be updated there. So that pivot, I think, is also an exciting time to hear from people across the city about what they'd like us to be focused on.
Great. Thank you very much, Counselor Bowen. And another word of thanks to you when you said you're ready to see the process come to fruition. Out of all the counselors up here, you've certainly had the longest engagement with this process. And so thank you for your work as well. And should note that in the process, Counselor Bowen, as Citizen Bowen, had written the executive summary from that committee, no small task. So thank you for your work. Other comments? Counselor St. Hiller?
So I too just wanted to thank the committee. I thought this was a pretty good process, and, you know, a lot of the updates made a lot of sense. And, you know, a lot of things that, you know, things have happened over the last few years, in particular, the ward council vacancy process that was a part of. I thought that was pretty good to see in the work. There are some things in here that I think do structurally change sort of balance of power within city government. And, you know, I know there's been a lot of discussion, there are pros and cons on both sides. There are some things in here I do disagree with, and we'll be proposing a couple amendments tonight, but, you know, look forward to supporting the vast majority of the work. I think it was pretty robust, and, you know, we will have a better document.
Thank you very much, Counselor St. Hiller. And after I see if other counselors have general comments, I'll come back around and get those sections that you're prepared to make a motion on. Other counselors who'd like to make a general comment or statement about this process or the document? All right. Oh, yes. Solicitor Williams, please.
Thank you. I will take an opportunity just to briefly speak.
Sure.
So in the draft that I sent to the council on August 10, that draft incorporated all of the proposed amendments that legal affairs made to the original charter committee draft. In addition to that, in our review after that, Ms. Contreras from the Collins Center and I, you know, the more you look at it, you find things that can get wordsmithed and tweaked a little bit. So we put some additional changes in the comments section of particular sections and highlighted those, which you have. We went through it again last week and came up with another small list of changes that as we arrive at those sections, one or both of us will attempt to get recognized to suggest perhaps an additional edit. They're small.
Okay.
And that's why Mr. Benson is here, because the draft that we think he has on his computer at this point should reflect those additional changes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. And I will try to be watchful for one or both of you to get recognized so that we make sure we draw attention to those for counselors. So at this point, counselors are... There's counselors who have come with, prepared to make a motion on a specific section, and I'll just make a list of which sections. Counselor Housman?
Yeah, I have a very, I would call it a tweak for consistency and clarity in Section 3.7 and 3.8. The language change just inserts two words. It's the same insertion in both places. So it's just a clarity and consistency tweak.
Thank you. So 3.7 and 3.8 are yours?
Yes.
Okay. Other counselors prepared to make a motion on a certain section tonight? Counselor St. Hiller?
So I am prepared to make a motion on Article 3, Section 3.1, related to the term of office, to strike the four years. Also, Section 4.1 regarding the school committee, striking the change to nine members and striking the references to the district seats. And then also, Section 7-3, increasing the signature requirement to get on the ballot to strike the change to 300 signatures and strike the language related to the district members.
Thank you, Counselor St. Hiller. So just to make sure I have them right, yours are, when we come back to them, Section 3.1, 4.1, and 7.3?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And the other counselors with sections you're prepared to amend tonight? Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. Well, it's sort of a question and/or prepared to amend. For the areas where we have recommendations in the text we read, we would still need to propose those changes in order to consider amendments beyond what was passed by legal affairs. Is that right? So for example, some of the additional recommendations?
That have come from Ms. Contreras.
From Ms. Contreras.
Yes. So I have these where I know counselors are prepared to make amendments, but I will then take us through each section to make sure that they're not the ones where we need to recognize those changes.
Got it. So because I listed some of those that I want to make the changes that were proposed, but it sounds like we'll take those as we go through section by section?
Yes. The ones that Solicitor Williams and Ms. Contreras have added.
Yes.
Yes. So it sounds like yours will be covered.
Oh, theirs, yep.
All right, great. Thank you, Counselor Bowen. Any other counselors with sections that you're prepared to make a motion on tonight? Counselor Sweeney?
Yes. I'll likely make this motion to bring forth a discussion among the council, but Section 3.8 in the vacancy of the office of the mayor, this is a matter that we discussed in the legal affairs subcommittee with regards to the date, the time period of which a special election would be triggered as opposed to the process outlined in, I believe it's the preceding section with regards to enacting mayor. So I will make an amendment that then would... I would have a few questions for the city solicitor and Mr. Perry.
Okay.
But yes, so it would be to strike 17 months in subsection A of Section 3.8, replace it with 34 months, and there would need to be some other language changes as well.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Sweeney. So Section 3.8?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors prepared to make a motion on a section tonight? All right. Thank you. This will be our working list, but because as we just, as Counselor Bowen and I just clarified between ourselves in the hearing of everyone, because Solicitor Williams and Ms. Contreras did also make some suggestions in other sections, I would just take us through section by section, and if you all would just let me know if those are one of the ones where we need to stop. So Section 1.1, incorporation. Section 1.2, short title. That one seems pretty straightforward. Section 1.3, distribution of powers. Section 1.4, powers of city. Mr. Benson, tell me if I'm going too fast. I know you're trying to keep up on them.
Okay.
I know it's hard sometimes to scroll on a giant screen. Section 1.5, construction. Section 1.6, intergovernmental relations. Section 1.7, definitions. Solicitor Williams?
So I don't know if this is the appropriate time for me to point out that one of the additions that is not reflected or was not previously reflected, but Dylan, if you scroll down to the end, 1-7S, so you're going to keep going down, would be to add the definition for regular municipal election, which we are using throughout the document but is not actually defined.
Okay.
So that's why I'm suggesting whenever you vote, that that definition be added.
Thank you. So would it be appropriate then to ask for a motion to accept this proposed change?
If that's what, how you plan to do this throughout the evening?
Yes.
I think that would be fine.
Okay. So counselors, you see here a recommendation that was made more recently than the document you have before you. This is to add definition of regular municipal election. As Solicitor Williams said, it's used throughout the document, so to define it here, I would entertain a motion to accept this proposed change.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries 9-0. So that additional suggestion is now, will be part of the document that we're working on as we go forward. Which brings us to Article 2, Legislative Branch, Section 2.1, Composition Term of Office. Section 2.2, Counsel President. Solicitor Williams?
So in 2.2C, Dylan, if you go down, so, I mean, you can... I'll read it just in case you can't see it. The comment is that Ms. Contreras and I recommend replacing the language that says the absence or disability with inability to serve, because that's the change that was made in other sections. So just eliminate absence or disability and just say inability to serve. And so our recommendation is to make that change there.
Thank you, Solicitor Williams. Counselors, is... I would entertain a motion to accept this proposed change?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 9-0, so we will accept that change. Counselor Bowen?
I just have a quick question on 2.1C. If you could take us back for just a brief second?
Counsel Vice President? Is that where you are?
Uh...
Oh, I'm 2.2. I'm sorry. Counselor Bowen?
Yeah, sorry. 2.1C eligibility?
Eligibility, yes.
I just wanted to confirm, we have a ward counselor shall, at the time of election, be a voter of the ward, provided however, if any ward counselor shall remove to another ward of the city, they may continue. We still have in there during the first 18 months of the term, and I was just curious if that is still necessary under the eligibility piece, because it is split out how vacancies are handled before and after the last six months of the term. But given that that was a change, just wanted to ensure that that was, that language was still needed.
Is that a question?
That is perhaps a question to the city solicitor.
I was just going to ask, is that Solicitor Williams or Ms. Contreras? I don't know if you can speak to Counselor Bowen's question.
Are you concerned that it doesn't accurately... This is the language from the Charter Review Committee. Are you concerned that it doesn't accurately reflect the intention of the committee, or are you thinking it's redundant?
Yes, if I may. Just that it's redundant and might confuse if someone moved within the last six months of a term, what would happen? Because it's not... Whether it's redundant or whether something else is needed.
Well, those are two different questions, and I don't want to do that on the fly, so...
Ms. Contreras?
As I recall, we wanted the vacancy provisions for school committee and city council to match. And so, yes, if there is a vacancy after the 18th month, the seat is vacant until the election, and then the person who elected serves for the remainder of the existing term as well as the term to which elected. I think that's how we dealt with that.
Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. So the clarification on how vacancies are dealt with is clear to me and I think as written. But because this is under the section on eligibility, it's about whether a vacancy is determined at any point in the term. And I just wanted to...
That was to capture remaining, being, remaining eligible. That's why I ended up there. You know, the fact that you could still be eligible if you moved within the first 18 months, because the section previously said the seat's vacant.
Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. Yes, and I think that captures the spirit of the discussion, but the provision that we were adjusting called that a vacancy up in, if the move happened during the first 18 months, but not after. And I believe what this reflects is that now, if that move happens at any time in the term, it is not deemed vacant. And so I thought it might be confusing to leave in the, during the first 18 months of the term and not refer to what happens in the final assessment.
That wasn't the intent, as I understood it. It does... So if your question is that what happens if the person moves after 18 months, it's vacant. That's how this is written, if that's what your question is. Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. And I don't know what the, if the intention of the Charter Review Committee was different. If you think it should be at any time during the term, they move to another ward, they should be allowed to continue to serve, then you can, I suppose, make that amendment. But...
Counselor Bowen? Thank you. So I guess the, as written, if someone moves during the last six months of the term, it's declared vacant, and then if there is still time to fill it in the November election, it is filled at that time. And if there is not, it's just a six-month vacancy or however long.
However long the vacancy is, yeah.
Okay.
I'll set Counselor Bowen.
I think so, yes. Because I think that doesn't change the spirit of it, just, yeah, felt like it wasn't fully fleshed out, but I don't have a specific amendment to propose there then. I would leave it as is.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Bowen. Thank you, Solicitor and Ms. Contreras, for your assistance there. I think we were at Section 2.3, Prohibitions. Section 2.4, Compensation and Expenses. Section 2.5, General Powers. Section 2.6, Exercise of Power, Quorum, and Rules. And it looks to me like 2.6 might be one... Mr. Benson, is this one that has a comment for us to pause at?
So is there... I'm sorry.
That's okay. Section 2.6, I think, is one of the ones that looks like it has a comment. This is Exercise of Powers, Quorum, and Rules.
So let me just get there. So the comment, I think, is pretty self-explanatory. We are recommending to not delete "or," right? So that their manner in which special meetings may be called and members may be notified should be notice delivered in hand or notice delivered to the place of residence of each member, which is different from in hand or by electronic mail to each member. Or each member or by electronic mail. So that's, those are the changes we think should be made there.
Thank you, Solicitor. Is there a motion to approve this suggested change?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Housman?
Yeah, I just want to clarify the wording. I get the first "or," but Solicitor Williams, you're suggesting that the, that the phrase "or by electronic mail" would be inserted after the word "residence." So it would read, "to the place of residence or by electronic mail..."
What does the comment say?
To each member.
I actually think it'd be moved.
Your comment on the side talks, refers to moving it.
Right, right. So it should be moved, not deleting "or," into relocate "or by elec... or electronic mail" to before each member. So there, see where it says "or by electronic mail"? That phrase should go after residence? Or after residence of?
Maybe you simply, it'd be best to replace each, the two words, each member, after the phrase "or by electronic mail." The place of residence of each member or by electronic mail to each member.
Sure. So add "to electronic, electronic mail" to each member. Add that. Add that. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That's fine, that works. Do you want to type that in? No, no, after electronic mail. To each member.
Thank you, Counselor Housman. Counselor Rotendo, this is just a slight different word order than you had made a motion to approve. Would you like to make a motion on this word order?
Yes, I would like to make a motion on the change, as Counsel Housman has stated.
Is there a second on that?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, sorry, I lost track of myself. We're moving forward. Two, Seven, Access to Information. Two, Eight, Officers Elected by City Council. Two, Nine, Ordinances and Other Measures.
Two, Nine?
Two, Eight.
I think it's Two, Nine, B.
Two, Eight has a comment.
Has a comment of Two, Eight.
Is it Two, Nine, or Two, Eight?
Oh, Two, Eight does say, "Legal Affairs rejected change redundant to language already in Charter."
Yeah, but you already have that. You already have that comment.
That's just a note, okay.
Yeah, as a note.
Okay, thank you.
That would be something that you'll have to, that Legal Affairs changed from what the Charter Review Committee had recommended.
Okay.
That's what that means.
Thank you. Counselor Bowen, did you have something on Two, Nine?
I did. Just a quick question on Two, Nine, D, Reconsideration. The Charter Review Committee and Legal Affairs recommended extending that period from twenty-four hours to seventy-two hours, which I think was originally based on sort of best practice elsewhere. And I still think that's wise, but just wanted to confirm, you know, with our city clerk and sort of normal practice of business, that that is not going to cause any problems if we make that change final.
Ms. Kent, I think the question is, if you are holding an order for seventy-two hours for reconsideration, does that change your ability to do your job? Is that a fair paraphrase of it?
It is, yes, thank you.
It does not?
It does not?
Excellent.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Thank you, Counselor Bowen. Two, Ten, Counsel, oh, sorry. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Contreras.
I want Two, Nine, B there.
Two, Nine, B?
Yeah. I think that's, that's the change that we were going to talk about.
It's right there.
You'll see the, the phrase, "If when a matter is next taken up for a vote, three or more members object to the taking of the vote, the matter shall be further postponed for not less than an additional five days, but no later than the next scheduled council And the committee added that phrase, "no later than the next scheduled council meeting." This, the solicitor brought up the fact that a meeting could be called before five days had expired. So we're proposing to add the phrase, something like a phrase, "following the completion of the five days as noted above." So then it would read, "no later than the next..."
Can we clarify exactly where she's reading? Because I don't know where to find what she's reading.
She's in Two, Nine, B, Measures.
It's the sentence beginning, "if a single member objects." If you have the line, if you have the line copy, it's line sixteen.
Okay, sixteen, thank you.
So then it would read, "three or more members object to the taking of the vote. The matter shall be further postponed for not less than an additional five days, but no later than the next scheduled council meeting, following the completion of the five days as noted above."
It says passage.
Yeah. If you want to use passage, that's fine, I just...
Okay, thank you. Counselors, is there a motion to accept this proposed change?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion of this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero. Thank you, Ms. Contreras. Thank you for getting my attention. Two, Ten, Council Review of Certain Appointments. Two, Eleven, Filling of Vacancies. There's Justin, thank you. Counselor Bowen, I see Solicitor Williams is on her feet, ready to go.
Marilyn, do you want to talk about this one? I think this came from you. Two, Eleven, D.
So Counselors, Two, Eleven, D, it looks like, on my copy, it looks like line twelve is the beginning.
Yeah, Two, Eleven, Two, Eleven, D needs just a slight bit of clarification. We're proposing to add the phrase in this, this paragraph, D, line thirteen. Such person who is not presently serving and receives the highest number of votes for council at large from among those candidates for the office who are not presently serving would be the person that would fill the seat. You need "not presently serving" twice, because we're trying to account for that the individual is not presently serving and the individual chosen is from among all of those not presently serving.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's a little, it's a little wordy, but I think that we get there.
Thank you. Counselors, is there a motion to accept this proposed change?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero to accept that change. Thank you. So I think that brings us to Three, One. Counselor St. Hilaire, I know you were prepared to make a motion on Three, One.
Yes, so Section Three, One, related to Term of Office, Section B, strike the change to four years. If I may, just give a little rationale of my thoughts. So I think, you know, this was one where I think there's arguments on both sides, there's pros and cons. For me, the cons outweigh the pros. I think government works best when people participate. I think there's no better way to decrease turnout in a municipal election than removing the mayor from the ballot. And I think you've seen that in other cities that have gone to a four-year election, Boston, Salem, the off-year election, voter turnout plummets. I also look at the balance of power. You know, I think we often lament the, you know, strong form of government that we have with the mayor, and it is the reality. And I think this proposal would shift more power to the mayor. And lastly, I just appreciate, you know, at the local level, elected officials being accountable and before the voters. And, you know, to me, you know, that makes sense. They should always be campaigning, in my mind, and selling what they're doing to the electorate. So for me, those are the reasons, and, you know, that's, that's that.
Thank you, Counselor St. Hilaire. So I know you said what you wanted to strike. Will you just form it in the form of a motion?
Make a motion, Article Three, Section Three, One, Item B, related to Term of Office, Line Seven, strike the change from two to four years.
Is there a second for Counselor St. Hilaire's motion? Counselor Housman is the second? Any discussion? Counselor Housman.
I've gone back and forth on this. I understand there, as Counselor St. Hilaire says, that there are good arguments to be made on both sides. The two arguments that I've heard, that I disagree with in favor of making this change, are that the, many cities seem to be moving in this direction, it's becoming more common. And that it would allow the prospective mayor to sort of consolidate the work of their office by not having to start running for office right away. The reasons which I'm not persuaded that that makes, that either of those makes sense are the following. One is, I don't think just because other cities are doing it is any persuasive reason at all. It doesn't speak to the merits. It just says, well, why don't we copy what other people are doing? I, I have not heard any persuasive argument that the power of the incumbency is not incredibly strong in Beverly. All you have to do is look at the history of Beverly elections to see that mayors, once they're in office, unless they have really messed up, and we only have one example of that in our, you know, the last twenty years, are reelected and reelected and reelected. So I think that the power of incumbency is incredibly strong, and that a prospective mayor doesn't need the prospect of four years in order to sort of have an incentive to run. And secondly, again, harkening back to the, to the exception that we've had in the last twenty, twenty-five years, I think that it is important that the voters have an opportunity to not have to wait four years if a mistake is made in their minds on the election of a prospective mayor. So I don't really see, based upon the reasoning, that there is a persuasive reason to change it to four years, but, but that there are overriding reasons for why two years is, is more, is more appropriate. I think that, that I would anticipate that some of my colleagues may say, well, let the voters decide. And, you know, I accept that that's a very fair and, and good comment. And these arguments could be made in the public, public arena. I guess in this case, I think that those of us who have served on the city council and who are involved in community affairs as elected officials have a different sense of how the process works and the relative balance of power, as Counselor St. Hilaire alluded to, that could be made in the public arena. But I would be comfortable keeping the charter the way it is in this particular instance.
Thank you, Counselor Housman. And just, just for those watching who may not, something you alluded to, some of the changes within, the proposed changes in the Charter, even if approved tonight, would be then ballot questions for voters, and this is one of those. Counselor Feldman and Counselor Rotendo after.
You just answered the question I was going to ask.
Okay. Counselor Rotendo, our mind melded again.
Thank you.
Counselor Feldman.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I also struggled with this point in particular, and the pros and the cons of this, and am also comfortable with this going to a ballot measure. But the, the one thing that strikes me that I tend to agree with both Counselors St. Hilaire and Counselor Housman regarding the need for the quick turnaround in running for office again, and that type of inability to get going with the work. But I feel now that I am far more involved, obviously, as an elected official in municipal government, that truly running for office at the municipal level is, the campaign is the work, and nothing can speak better to running for reelection than actually doing the work that we have promised that we would do. So I don't see that at the municipal level. I can see that at different levels of government, but at the municipal level, the best way to run for office and run for reelection is to do the work and get it done. So I think in some ways, the every-two-year turnaround is more of an incentive at the local level to get the work done and to do right by your constituents. So that is my takeaway on why I could comfortably support not putting this to a ballot measure.
Thank you, Counselor Feldman. Any other discussion on this one before we vote? Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. Just briefly to say, I also waffled on this one quite a bit, and am, you know, happy to support the changes proposed by the Charter Review Committee, knowing that this is a measure that would go on the ballot, because I think what we heard through the whole long process was that this is a topic with a lot of opinions on it, and that there is enough support for moving to a four-year term to open that up to the ballot process. And that's part of the reason why we schedule these reviews periodically, to say, is it time for this to go out to a bigger audience? So I think our conclusion as a committee was that it's that time, and I think all the points that are raised tonight are also valid, but happy to support the change to four years.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bowen. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. So all those in favor of Counselor St. Hilaire's motion to strike the proposed change of four years and maintain the language of two years, say aye.
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 Sorry, could you just, I...
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. And all those who are not in favor and are in favor of keeping the fours and sending it to the ballot? So that's seven to, two, seven. Thank you, Ms. Kent. Two, seven. And that's, this will be one that will be before voters. Moving forward, we're at Three, Two, Executive Powers, Enforcement of Ordinances. Three, Three, Appointments by Mayor. Three, Four, Temporary Appointments to City Offices. Three, Five, Communications, Special Meetings. Three, Six, Approval of Mayor, Exception, Veto.
Can I ask you a question, Councilwoman Flowers? As a voter?
Oh, the, right now, it's not, not really a public forum, so I...
Oh, okay.
But I'm happy for you to email or ask us questions, for sure.
Okay, I just had a question on what voters do about the Charter. Okay.
So I guess I'll say generally that some of the, some of the measures that you'll hear in the Charter will be on a regular ballot as a ballot question. And so one of those will be the mayor's term.
I was hoping you could clarify for people at home, do they, is it an all or nothing on the Charter, or specific questions?
I will clarify this. That's a good question. I'll clarify for everyone watching. Thank you. So the Charter itself, as a full document, will be adopted with some proposed changes. You're hearing that process tonight, the changes that the city council, that came from the Charter Review Committee that are either being now adopted by the city council or maybe changed through amendments this evening, and recommendations that came from Legal Affairs that will either be adopted or changed this evening through amendments. That document as a whole will not be something that voters will vote on. There are specific provisions within the Charter that are substantial enough changes. For example, the mayor's term that will be on the ballot for voters. So hopefully, that's helpful. Mr. Perry, did you want to clarify something that I said?
Yeah, Madam Perry, I think it's important to understand that once you vote, whatever it is you vote tonight, it then goes to the mayor. The mayor can veto certain sections of it, veto all, whatever it is. So it's important for the voters that it goes to the mayor, and once the mayor approves whatever he wants to approve, then it would go as a piece of special legislation to the House and Senate jointly by our legislative delegation. Then the House of Representatives, the Senator, and the Governor have to sign off on it. Then it would come back to the voters of the community for a couple, as it's currently constituted, for the mayor's term, and I think the school committee term would be two referendums. So I hope that clarifies.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Good clarification. Thank you, I appreciate that. Oh, Three, Six, Approval of the Mayor, Exception, Veto. Three, Seven, and Counselor Housman, I know this is one of yours, I also see a note, another comment here. So Three, Seven, this is Temporary Absence of Mayor. Solicitor Williams, it looks like there's a comment here, and then we'll go to Counselor Housman for your motion.
Sure. So, let's just look. So one of the suggestions that we are making is in the first sentence to delete the words "successive..." "successive working" so that it just reads "for a period of five days." Days is already defined. It's actually in Section 8.8 of the charter under computation of time, and if a time period is fewer than seven days, then it does not include holidays and Saturdays and Sundays. And this is one of those questions that is really something I've been asked, you know, more than once, like, what does a working day mean in 2022, you know? So I think that it just doesn't need to be there, because I think it's ambiguous. And then the other changes, these are minor. I think Marilyn, you were, just wanted to point out that when we use things like second or third, that we're going to need to write out the word. So there are two, there's a second in that paragraph and there's a third. The word needs to be written out. And then the final one is, Dylan, if you can click on to City Council, the highlighted, it should go to a city. See the word "city" before "regular municipal." We're eliminating, we're just trying to call it "regular municipal election" throughout, and that one didn't get caught.
Thank you, Solicitor. Is there a motion to accept this series of edits, suggested edits to this section?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine-zero for those edits. Thank you, Solicitor, Ms. Contreras. Then Councilor Houseman, while we're in three-seven, I know you were prepared to make a motion here.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion in Section 3.7, page 31, line three, add the two words "willing or," so that it would read, "if none of the councilors at large are willing or able to serve as mayor and so forth." The reason for doing so is that all the previous references to "able to serve" includes the word "willing" or "unwilling," and it is lacking here. And the standard rule of interpretation by lawyers is if something shows up in lots of places but is absent in one place, that's significant and it means something. And I believe this is simply a matter of tidying up consistency. It doesn't change the language, but adds clarity and consistency to remove that ambiguity.
Thank you, Councilor Houseman. Would you be willing to pose that as a motion?
I already have, but I'll make it again. I move that the words, two words, "willing or" are added in the sentence three, page 31 of Section 37.
Thank you. Is there a second for Councilor Houseman's motion?
No, no.
Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine-zero to add "willing or." So this takes us to three-eight. I know Councilor Houseman and Councilor Sweeney have motions in this section. I also see a comment. Solicitor Williams or Ms. Contreras, you can go to your comment, and then I'll come back to the counselors.
So our comment is in three-eight B. Do you want to jump to B? I didn't know if they had a, if somebody had a suggestion for three-eight A.
Councilor, that's, Councilor Houseman or Sweeney, is yours in three-eight A, either of you?
It is. It would pertain to the section as a whole, so I'm happy to, I think it makes more sense to go through the technical.
Okay.
Proposals from Ms. Williams first. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
So in three-eight B, the, Dylan, can you click on, see where it says "needs to be proposed," just so they can see where I'm talking about? So the proposal there is to delete the language "to be held in the 22nd month of the term" and instead of that, put in the word "next" in front of "regular municipal election," on the theory that there could be a year in which, because of the calendar, the term ends, say, January 7th, which would mean November, the election could be the 23rd month. So we don't need to say in the 22nd month. The point is, it's just at the next regular municipal election. And then in the last sentence, this is something that was already in the draft, you received in August. My suggestion, and I believe Marilyn agrees with me, is to strike that last sentence as written and just tighten it up so that, with the language I've highlighted, because it's really not a discretionary decision whether or not there'll be enough time to hold an election. It's really, and the clerk can probably speak to it in more, with more specifics than I can about deadlines, candidates having to get their nomination papers in. It's really just going to be a matter of whether the calendar will allow for it or not. So hence, instead of saying the clerk shall be the sole judge, it's not really what we meant. It's that she'll have to go through the analysis under general laws and determine that.
Okay. Thank you. Counselors, is there a motion to accept the changes suggested by Solicitor Williams in this section?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine-zero to accept those. Ms. Kent, I'm sorry that you're no longer the sole judge.
I'm okay with that.
Do you want, you can borrow my gavel and help you. So let's go to Counselor Houseman. Did you mention, I know Counselor Sweeney has one for the whole section, did you, am I recalling right that your, this was a similar editorial tweak to three-seven for you?
This is, this is the same two words for the same reasoning in the same equivalent place.
All right. Would you like to make a motion as to where you would like to place them here?
Yes, let me find it. I move that the two words "willing or" are inserted in Section 3.8C on page 33, line five, to read, "if none of the councilors at large are willing or able to serve as mayor."
Thank you, Counselor Houseman. Is there a second on Counselor Houseman's motion?
Second.
Any discussion on this one? Counselor Bowen.
Thank you. I have a quick question about the same line for a similar reason. It ends with the phrase "with all the powers of the mayor," and I believe that's the only place where that language is included, rather than simply "serve as mayor." And would appreciate an opinion from our legal counsel and advisors on whether that is there for a reason or could, as part of this amendment, be struck out as well.
Thank you, Counselor Bowen. Solicitor Williams, is that something you can speak to? Counselor Bowen's question about?
You know, I would want an opportunity to go back, maybe during a recess, read the whole section. I mean, this language has been here since the Charter Review Committee approved it. I'm reluctant, after as many reviews as it's been through, to suggest that it be changed. So.
Counselor President, I'd like to move the motion on, move the vote on my motion.
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Houseman. All those in favor of Counselor Houseman's "willing or"? Thank you. Nine-zero.
Thank you.
And Counselor Bowen, are you comfortable if we move on, maybe take a brief recess in a bit for the Solicitor Reviewer question, and then we'll come back? Which brings us, Counselor Sweeney, that brings us to your motion for three-eight.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to strike the number seventeen in subsections A and subsection C to be replaced with the number thirty-four. So instead of seventeen months, it would be thirty-four months, and additionally, to add the language on line five of page 32, after, "for which the mayor is elected to read and said vacancy cannot be filled in accordance with subsection B below." And to, if I may, expand upon why I proposed this. I had considered this, I know it was discussed when the, this particular section was before the Legal Affairs Subcommittee. I had talked to Chairman Flaherty of the Charter Review Commission and Mr. Perry as well. The reason, so I understand the arguments for both sides. Essentially, what this amendment does is stretches the term for when a vacancy, or the length of time for when a vacancy in the office of the mayor would need to be filled by special election or potentially the regular municipal election if the calendar lines up, from roughly a year and a half to three years. And the reason that I'm proposing this amendment is I understand the arguments for leaving the language as proposed by the Charter Commission, given that a special election is not free and would cost the city money, and that ultimately, the office, the full term, would be voted on by the voters and, and, I know, I hesitate to say acting mayor, because by the language in this section, it would be, the person holding the office would have the full powers of the mayor. But essentially, what, under the section as proposed, my concern is that the office of the mayor would be filled for a period of up to potentially two and a half years, depending on the timing of the vacancy, by a person who is not elected mayor by the voters of the city. And so while there would be the cost of a special election that the city would have to bear for up to three years into a term, meaning that a special election would need to be held, even if it were only to fill a year's worth of a term that would then expire in the following year, I still believe it's important that the voters have a say in who the mayor is in the unlikely scenario, but it could still occur, that there's a vacancy in the office of the mayor. So while I respect the proposal of the Charter Review Committee, I know they had this discussion within the committee and that we had the discussion in Legal Affairs, I think it's important that we, as a council, weigh on this particular provision in the event, although unlikely, that it does occur and there is an office in the vacancy of the mayor roughly two years into that term. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sweeney. Is there a second for, Counselor St. Hilaire? Thank you. Solicitor Williams, I don't know if you had any comment. Counselors, questions, comments, or discussion on Counselor Sweeney's motion? Oh, Counselor Houseman.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from Mr. Perry on this question.
Mr. Perry, people are requesting your input.
I don't know, this is a budget question. There are pro and con on this, I guess. I think Counselor Sweeney articulated it. If you're asking my opinion, I kind of lean towards leaving it as recommended by the Charter Review Committee. That's just my opinion, but it doesn't mean he's wrong in his viewpoints. We did discuss this today, we went over it. I mean, to me, it's not, I hear the points, and it was discussed at great length by, you know, a former Counselor, President Flaherty's committee there, but bottom line to it, I would slightly lean towards leaving it as it is, but I can understand if you want to go the other direction as well.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Counselor St. Hilaire.
Oh, from Mr. Perry, what is the cost of a special election?
Maybe the city clerk can help me with this one. Jeez, I don't know, 20, 30 grand, maybe? In that range? Yeah. Something around 25, let's say 25 grand.
Thank you, Counselor St. Hilaire. Other comments or questions, further discussion? All right. All those in favor of Counselor Sweeney's proposed amendment, the motion on the floor? Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. So two-seven, that motion fails. I think there's one other comment. Yes, thank you.
So in three-eight C, I feel like we just did this, but I think it was for a different section. So Dylan, if you click on to the comments, it's the same issue with second and third, the digits need to be written out is the word, and then there's an extra "city" in front of "regular municipal election" that we recommend those changes be made. And then there's also a change in three-eight D. It's a slight rewording of what is currently there. I think it's, it just, it's more accurate, because seven-fourteen G is the section that states, "if a vacancy arises as a result of a recall election, there shall be a special election." In other words, the other vacancy provisions don't apply if they can be held within the requirements of seven-dash-fourteen F of the charter. So that pertains to, you can't have a recall election in the first six months or the last six months of a term. So I just think it makes more sense to have it worded that way. It doesn't actually change what it says.
Thank you, Solicitor. Also, is there a motion to approve the suggested changes from the Solicitor on this section?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Nine-zero, thank you. Solicitor, Solicitor Williams?
Am I jumping the gun here? I was going to go on to three-eight C. I'm sort of losing track of where I am.
No, you're, if you're still in.
Three-eight E. Yeah.
Then you are right on schedule.
Do you want to take this one, Marilyn?
Sure.
All right. On, on line nineteen, this concerns the election of a mayor who is going to complete a term as well as be elected to their own term. So line twenty-one, "as the mayor shall forthwith be certified and shall serve for the, not ensuing last two, but balance of the concluding term as well as, in addition to the term to which elected." Sorry, lost my place. And the last sentence can be eliminated because it simply repeats what appears above.
Thank you. Last sentence of E. The sentence, "the city clerk shall certify such candidate." Okay. Thank you, Ms. Contreras. Is there a motion to approve these suggested edits?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine-zero. Thank you, Ms. Contreras. I think that brings us to Article four. I think before we move completely from Article three, since this, Counselor Bowen had a question that Solicitor Williams had requested some time to look over, I'd entertain a motion for, Solicitor Williams, is five minutes too brief a recess for you to?
Well, I could, yes, and it would be helpful to have the question.
Restated.
Restated and clarified.
Would you, Counselor Bowen, would you restate your question, and then I will take a motion for a longer than five-minute recess?
Thank you. The question was on the printed copy on page thirty-three, line six and seven. At the end of that large proposed new language, it has the words "with all the powers of the mayor," and that appears to only apply to the last sentence of several kind of parallel sentences, but not just. sentences, but not to the others. And so just on the odd language out, being a red flag principle, wanted to confirm that that's in the right place and applying to the right...
Well, it depends on what the intention is. What was the intention of the committee?
So I believe the intention is that in any of the instances described in Section C, the person then serving as mayor is serving as mayor with all the powers of the mayor.
I think that we're trying to make a distinction between serving in an emergency capacity when you only had limited powers and taking over the office as acting mayor. So you have all the powers, you don't have those limitations that exist when it's only just a temporary vacancy. That was the distinction that we were trying to make there.
It seems like, Counselor Bowen, did you have a...
So, yes, I appreciate that clarification because those distinctions, I think, are important. I'm just not seeing how that is the section in which that distinction needed to be made because...
Because this person is serving as mayor until the next, until the next election.
Yes.
Not serving for sixty days. He's not sharing as a, dealing as a result of an absence.
Yes, so my question is why that only applies to the final sentence of Section three, eight, C, and not to three, eight, C in its entirety?
I understand the question. I think if, you know, it is something that probably would be better reviewed in a recess and returned to.
So with that, Counselors, I would entertain a motion for a ten-minute recess?
How about fifteen?
Fifteen-minute recess.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Solicitor. So we're at recess until eight-thirty? Much so, before we move forward into Article four, Counselor Bowen had posed a question right before we went to recess and of Solicitor Williams, and then we took a recess to give time for that to be reviewed. So Solicitor Williams, I would invite you to give any...
Yes, thank you. The consensus is that an amendment should be made to that section. If the intention was that any one of those counselors would have the powers of the mayor, the amendment does need to be made, and it seems to me that there shouldn't be a distinction if you read the whole section. So that highlighted language in gray is what we came up with.
Thank you, Solicitor Williams. Is there a motion to accept this proposed change? Is there a motion to accept this proposed change?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion or comment on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero. Thank you, Counselor Bowen, for that question. Thank you, Solicitor Williams, for taking the time to review that and to offer us that proposed amendment, which is now an accepted amendment. With that, we'll go to Article 4. And Counselor St. Hilare, you had a motion for 4-1.
Yes, Article 4, Section 4-1, Item A, composition term of office. Line 15, strike the change from seven to nine members. And then below, line 19 through 21, strike the creation of the district language.
Thank you, Counselor St. Hilare. And so, then that's your motion, Counselor St. Hilare, yes?
Correct.
Thank you. Is there a second for Counselor St. Hilare's motion?
Second.
Counselor Rotendo, thank you. Any comment or discussion on this one?
Question?
Counselor Housman.
Is this one of the proposals that might go to the general public if it went through the process as described by Mr. Perry?
That is my understanding, but I'll just verify. Mr. Perry is nodding. This would be something that would then be on the ballot, yes. Any other... Counselor Rotendo?
Just a quick comment, because you answered my question. Comment is, I like the way the comment is. I don't, I support what Counselor St. Hilare has here, but I'd like to see that the voters aren't going to be able to choose whether it's going to be that way. But I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rotendo. Other discussion from counselors on Counselor St. Hilare's motion? Counselor St. Hilare?
I would just like to add, you know, in also looking at the four-year term with this one, I saw this as sort of a structural change to our local government. I get the arguments that were made, and again, I don't disagree necessarily with them. I just think there are pros and cons. And on this one, I would say our roles as city counselors have changed as well over recent years, but that doesn't mean we add two more seats, you know? And so I think, for me, I would prefer to leave it as is. I find the district seats a little confusing. I've always wondered why our school districts aren't tied to our school committee seats as well. So for me, I would just like to keep it as is.
Thank you very much, Counselor St. Hilare. Any other discussion, counselors? All those in favor of Counselor St. Hilare's motion to make these changes? Thank you. All those opposed? So that's 4-5, if I counted correctly. Four in favor, five against. Thank you. And thank you, Counselor St. Hilare. It looks to me like there's also a comment in the margins of 4-1 on page 36. C-3.
That's really just a housekeeping thing. That paragraph beginning, "The school committee shall have general charge," it currently just floats in the charter as it exists. It really doesn't have any connection to Paragraph 3. So we're just recommending that you assign it number 4.
Okay, thank you, Solicitor. Is there a motion to approve that suggested change?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero. Section 4-2, School Committee President. Section 4-3, School Committee Budget. Article 5, Administrative Organization. Section 5-1, Organization of City Agencies. 5-2, Publication of Administrative Code. 5-3, Merit Principle. 5-4, Department of Municipal Finance. Looks like there might be a comment in 5-4.
That's left over from a prior review.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Contreras. Then that takes us to 5-5, Department of Planning and Development. 5-6, Planning and Construction of Buildings and Other Facilities. 5-7, Department of Human Resources. 5-8, Department of Municipal Inspections. Article 6, Finance and Fiscal Procedures. 6-1, Fiscal Year. 6-2, Annual Budget Meeting. Ms. Contreras?
We're all rushing to the fore to tell you that you need the word "and."
Oh, "and provide." Is there a motion to approve the addition of the word "and"?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Nine zero. 6-3, School Committee Budget. 6-4, Submission of Budget and Budget Message. 6-5, Budget Message. 6-7, Action on Budget. 6-8, Supplementary Budgets Other Appropriations. 6-9, Capital Improvement Program. 6-10, Independent Audit. I see a comment in the margins on 6-10. On mine, it's page 58, lines 5, 6, 7, it looks like are highlighted. Or 6, 7, 8 here.
On 6-10, on page 59, there is an alternate, 6-10. At the Legal Affairs meeting, there was discussion about delineating between the role of the council to annually assure that the audit was conducted and the process of selecting an audit firm that would only occur once every several years. So what I tried to do here was begin to make that distinction without disturbing the language to a great degree that you had already approved. So the changes appear in red on the copy, starting with line 7. Line 7 to 11 is a significant change. And then the addition of assuring the conduct of the outside audit appears on page 60
Thank you, Ms. Contreras.
Just to elaborate, so...
Thank you.
Legal Affairs did approve a version, an entirely new version. And then at the end, there was a discussion about maybe building that out a little bit more, but at the time, we didn't have the language. So they decided, and Counselor Rand, you can correct me if I'm wrong, to vote it out, and then we would come back with this proposed change, which it seemed like that was the better route to go, so.
Thank you. So am I correct? I guess, Solicitor Williams, just so I'm following you correctly, if there are two versions, there would need to be a motion to accept one or the other?
That would be my, my recommendation would be to, yes, vote to choose version door A or door B.
Okay. And B is the one that reflects the recommendations from Legal Affairs?
The discussion, yes, that occurred after they voted on slightly different language.
Okay, thank you.
And Counselor Rand, if you can, you know, verify that, because obviously you own the chair, so.
Thank you, Solicitor. Counselor Rand, did you want to comment at all?
Yes, that is, that sounds accurate.
Thank you, Counselor Rand.
I can confirm.
Thank you. So, counselors, I would entertain a motion to approve, as the Solicitor said, version A or version B. Version B reflecting discussion in Legal Affairs.
No, the initial version was passed by Legal Affairs. You had the discussion, but we never came to a conclusion. So the second one that appears on page 59 is a result of our conversation to follow up on the initial Legal Affairs conversation.
Thank you. Counselor Bowen?
Yes. So I can move that we accept option B, which is the language adopted by Legal Affairs and further amendments suggested by Ms. Contreras and Solicitor Williams.
Thank you, Counselor Bowen. Very nicely moved. Wait to weave that all together. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Housman?
Could someone summarize the difference between A and B in a nutshell?
Solicitor Williams or Ms. Contreras, would you like to?
Or Ms. Maryland, do you want to...
Okay. The concern was to delineate selection of the audit firm from the council's role in annually providing for the audit.
And A would be what? And B would be what?
You have two roles. And so the change was to make sure that both roles were clear, because it was getting kind of a little...
And which one were clear in your opinion? A or B?
Excuse me, B.
B, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Housman. I think Ms. Olmixon is getting some water. Thank you. Assistant Solicitor Olmixon is going to grab you some water as well.
Just to elaborate on what Ms. Contreras is saying, option A could have been read as every single year, the city council had to go through a procurement process in order to make the audit happen, when in fact, what the intention was, is that annually, the city council has an obligation to ensure that an audit happens, but that the procurement doesn't have to, a separate procurement process doesn't have to happen every single year. And so the new language was intended to separate out those two things.
Thank you for that clarification. That's exactly what I was looking for. That's up.
Thank you, Solicitor.
And I think, by the way, you may have done the want to point that out in the drawing.
I believe you. Shocking.
Further discussion? Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. I think the additional edit that was made specifically saying that the city council shall select the firm rather than just shall provide for a firm to do the work strengthened the provision by just really clearly saying that selection process is their responsibility, since that had been up for debate previously. And so it takes, it goes from one sentence to several paragraphs, but lays out that selection role, then that, what the selection process looks like, including the feedback that was incorporated to reflect some city employees helping advise on that, and then the actual timeline, including checking in on the performance of the auditing firm. So it gives that fully comprehensive picture.
Thank you, Counselor Bowen. Any other discussion, counselors, on this motion? Counselor Housman?
The motion is to vote in favor of option B. Is that correct? Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero. I think this takes us to Article 7, if I'm correct. Elections and election-related matters. Section 7-1, City Elections, General Preliminary. 7-2, Nonpartisan Elections. 7-3, Preliminary Election. And Counselor St. Hilare, I know you had a motion for this one.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion related to Article 7, Section 7-3, Preliminary Elections, Item A, related to signature requirements. In line 8, I would strike the change from 100 to 300 such signatures for the office of mayor. And line 10, I would strike the change from 100 to 300 such signatures for the office of city councillor at large.
Is there a second for Counselor St. Hilare's motion?
So moved. I mean, second.
Thank you. We have lots of seconds. It's moved, it's seconded. Counselor St. Hilare, discussion?
So we have very few contested races in our city, and I don't know why it would make sense to make it harder to get on the ballot. So, you know, to me, we should be encouraging more participation and not putting more barriers in place to participate. So I, for those reasons, feel that these changes are not appropriate.
Thank you very much, Counselor St. Hilare. Counselor Housman?
I'd be interested in hearing from former councillor Flaherty on this question, given that he ran at large, ran at large multiple times, and had to go out and get signatures, and was on the committee, and maybe could speak to the question of 100 versus 300 signatures for the mayor's office and the at-large office.
Counselor Flaherty, I'll invite you to the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a support dog.
Sorry. Little hotter hearing. We just thought it was a good idea to kind of have that threshold of 300. There wasn't really a lot of controversy on it. We just thought it was doing the at-large, going across the citywide, that that was an appropriate number. I don't know if that answers your question.
Well enough, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Thank you, Mr. Silva, also, for the support. Other discussion on this one? All right, all those in favor of Counselor St. Hilare's motion to strike the change to 300 and retain the 100 for both of those lines?
Aye.
And all those opposed? I'm sorry, can I see the "all" in favor again? Okay. Thank you. So it's 6-3, and that is approved. I'm sorry, I forgot to look to my left for counting purposes. I'm sorry, counselors, to my left. So that brings us to 7-4. Ballot position, regular municipal election. 7-5, wards. 7-6, application of general laws. 7-7. Counselor Sweet, did I see your hand? Okay, so I'm sorry. I didn't want to skip over you. 7-7, petitions to council or school committee. 7-8, citizen initiative measures. Looks like there is a comment here, Ms...
I think some of this falls into, there are several things in 7-8 and 7-9 that definitely fall into the sort of syntax, housekeeping kind of situation. The first occurs in Section 7-8. Subsection E. This is page 69, I believe. Yes. Page 69, line 14. Oh, it was beginning on line 12. "If the number of signatures to the supplemental petition is found to be sufficient by the registrar of the voters and a certificate as described above is submitted to the city clerk..." So the words "as described above" clerk, so the words "as described above" would replace the words "of same," because there's a reference to the certificate in subsection C. This is a certificate of validity of signatures. Instead of repeating it, we could just refer them to the last reference to it. Do you want me to keep going? Or do you want to consider that one?
You said there's several, so I, why don't I take a motion on this, since these seem like editorial. Is there a motion to approve this suggested change?
So moved. Second.
All those, oh, any discussion, sorry? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nine zero, thank you.
Marilyn, is it certificate as described above?
Yes.
Okay, so we take out "of same."
Yeah, "of same" would be eliminated.
Not certi, yeah, just "of same," and then insert "as described above."
I think when you're ready, we're ready for the next.
We'll spell check it at the end.
Right. Section 7.9 on page 71, line 14. Our, our recommendation here is to remove the word "forthwith," because "forthwith" immediately just is a little overkill.
Is there a motion to approve this suggested change?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and 7.9B, on page 72, line 5. We're suggesting that the phrase "except that the words for the quotation measure or part of it protested against," because the phrase "measure or part of it protested against" is used in the prior paragraph. They're just, we're just looking for internal consistency here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve this suggested change?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Nine zero. Which brings us to Section 7.10, ineligible measures. 7.11, submission of other matters to voters. 7.12, conflicting provisions. 7.13, required voter participation. Article, oh, Counselor Bowen?
Thank you. Just a general comment on some of the provisions in Article VII, that one of the things we talked about as a committee was helping make these provisions more understandable for people, because they are, there are several provisions in there for citizens to push back against things passed by us as a council, or the school committee, or proposed things that we haven't taken up that they'd like to see. And the language in the charter is, as we've seen, necessarily very legalistic, and so we talked about ways to make that a little clearer for people, and I would love to see us, as a council, take up that, that mission, and whatever we have landed on, help to translate that into a more plain language summary of how these provisions work.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bowen. That's a great suggestion. I think helping to, helping to make things accessible to the public is really important, so thank you. I think that takes us to Article VIII, general provision, general provisions. Section 8.1, charter changes and charter review. Section 8.2, severability. Section 8.3, specific provision to prevail. 8.4, rules and regulations. 8.5, review of ordinances. 8.6, uniform procedures applicable to multiple member bodies. 8.7, number and gender. 8.8, computation of time. 8.9, references to general laws. 8.10, certificate of election or appointment. 8.11, oath of office of mayor, councillors, and school committee members. 8.12, notice of vacancies. Counselor Bowen?
With apologies, a very small potential edit to Section 8.11. When correcting the outdated spelling of councillors, I think we've left off an S.
Oh, for mayor-elect and councillors-elect, is that what you're referring to, Counselor Bowen? That does look like a missing S to me as well. Solicitor Williams, would you concur with that?
I have to confess that I am a little bit in this section right now, so.
It's a strikeout on the, oh, there's spelling of councillor, councillors with two Ls. It needs an S.
It seems like it should say councillors-elect, yeah.
Counselor Bowen, would you like to make that motion?
And I would, I would move we add an S to councillor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries nine zero for that triumphant S. Section 8.12, notice of vacancies. 8.13, loss of office, excessive absence. 8.14, filling of vacancies. 8.15, removals and suspensions. Article IX.
Did you just say 8.15?
Oh, yes, removals and suspensions.
Right. So there are changes that were proposed by Legal Affairs. Right, that was a proposal that Legal Affairs, are, are you at this point accepting changes? You're, you're voting on those too, right?
Yes, so I would anticipate, unless a council was making a change to what's in front of us, that it would be accepting the charter inclusive of changes made by Legal Affairs.
Already made by Legal Affairs, okay.
Yes. Provided that that works, it sounds like it does.
Counselor President?
Counselor Housman?
I have a question regarding Section 8.13. If I may.
8.13, I missed the next thing you said, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
After you said, "I have a question on 8.13," I just missed the next thing.
Oh, I said, "I have a question of terminology."
Oh, please.
So, the first two lines read. I withdraw my question.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you, Counselor. So I think we're at Article IX. 9.1, continuation of existing laws. 9.2, continuation of government and administration. 9.3, transfer of records and property. 9.4, continuation of personnel. 9.5, effect on obligations, taxes, et cetera. 9.6, time of taking effect. There's a comment here.
Yep, the original 9.6, of course, addressed the provisions of the 1995 charter, so this is much shorter. This is, this will reference the provisions of sections, and they'll be the sections of the charter relating to the mayor, the council, the school committee regarding the three questions on the ballot. Will take effect upon voter ratification, but not otherwise. The second section will address the questions to be on the November 2025 ballot. It, it, it's just a record of, of the intent.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Counselor Bowen?
I just had a clarifying question on that first regular municipal election following ratification, so that's anticipating that ratification could happen in 2023 and take effect by 2025. Is that date necessary?
I mean, we're anticipating that it does pass in 2023. Your timeline is very good for achieving that, so the questions will be on the ballot in, in 2023. This tells the voter that, that at the next election, those provisions take effect.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. So is there a motion to approve this suggested language?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Nine zero. Section 9.7, disposition of certain special laws. There's a comment, it looks like a comment in the margin on 103. Is that, that's an older comment? Okay, thank you. So I think that's the conclusion of our document at this time. So, on our agenda tonight, then, we have two, two votes. One is on Order 75, which was the review received, the Charter Review Committee's final report, and so I'd entertain a motion to receive that report from the Charter Review Committee and place it on file.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So we'll receive that and place on file with our great thanks to the members of that committee, some of whom are with us tonight, but for their service and for their willingness to be part of it. Oh, please, Mr. Flaherty.
I'll be really brief, but I wanted to thank, I know we've done this before, but Marilyn, Jerry, for helping out, Stephanie Williams, but it's interesting, when I was, I think I was 27, I was elected to the Charter Commission many years ago, and then served as a city councillor, and being on this commission, it's kind of an interesting take, some of the history repeats itself a little bit, but I remember at the beginning of this, when former council president Guancey asked me to chair this committee, I knew it was going to be a long endeavor, I was hoping it would be a little quicker, but what I really envisioned was to have the council be involved from the beginning, instead of, you know, the Charter Review Committee handing it over to the council and the council seeing it for the first time, and I think Julie DeSilva will, will agree with me, too, that it was a nice collaborative effort. We knew not everybody was going to agree on it even tonight. It really was democracy in action, and a lot of work went into this for the Review Committee, especially, we did a lot of these Zoom meetings during COVID, I mean, Counselor Bowen can understand that, but I really wanted to say thank you, because seeing this tonight, I know you guys did a little work in Legal Affairs, and a lot of grammar fixing and all that, but again, thank you from the Review Committee, because that was our vision, to kind of say, let's do this in a collaborative effort, and again, not everybody's going to agree, but the ultimate thing, the voters will be able to decide on a few things, but ultimately, this will be a better document for the next 25 years. So I really appreciate everybody's kind of collaborative effort and everything, so thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flaherty, and thank you for your work as well on that committee. And you alluded to it, but it is true that that Charter Review Committee this time had a challenge unlike any Charter Review Committee before, working through a global pandemic, and so thank you for persevering on that. Our other vote does need to be on the charter itself, so 75A, so I'd entertain a motion to approve the document of the charter inclusive of amendments made tonight and proposed by Legal, changes proposed by Legal Affairs.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bowen?
Maybe just to reiterate at the end of this process, that if we accept all of the proposed changes, including tonight's amendments, that three things would be on the 2023 ballot as questions to the voters, one being the four-year mayoral term, one being the additional two members of the school committee, and one more minor one that we didn't call out earlier, but that provision of a ward councillor moving within the city, being able to continue in their seat, because all of those are structural changes, that they would appear as three separate ballot questions for the voters, and not take effect unless ratified that way, but everything else could take effect if ratified by the state legislature. Just wanted to confirm with everyone in the room that those are the implications of the vote.
Thank you, and always good to help for voters who may be watching, for them to know which things they'll see potentially on their ballot. Counselor St. Hilaire?
And just a point of clarification, in, in what is the role of the mayor, then? My understanding was he would also have to agree with these changes, correct?
That is, Solicitor Williams, I'll let you answer that.
So, under the state constitution, in order for, to submit special legislation, which this effectively would be, a home rule petition, both branches of government need to approve what is being submitted. So, I anticipate there'll be a communication from the city council to the mayor, advising the mayor's office that this is what has been approved by the council, and then the mayor will have an opportunity to go through the charter, and if he doesn't agree with certain provisions, identify those and communicate that back to the city council, or if he agrees with all of them, then Ms. Contreras and I would prepare an actual home rule petition, which is the document that would go to the state legislature.
And just to follow up, the items Counselor Bowen said would be on the ballot next, next fall, that is only after the mayor approved those, correct?
It's only after the legislature.
But the mayor would have to approve, then the legislature, so it's not, as of tonight, they would be appearing on the ballot.
No. Nothing can go to the state legislature unless the mayor approves it.
Just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. It's a good clarification. I'm sorry, is, I forgot if we have a motion in a second yet.
We do.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion carries nine zero. Thank you very much, Counselors. I know we've thanked a lot of other people in the room, but Counselors, also for your engagement, both through the Legal Affairs Subcommittee, thank you, Counselor Rand, for your leadership there, and members of your Subcommittee, Counselors Rotundo and Sweeney, for your dedicated work. Thank you, Counselors, for your work tonight, Counselors who brought motions to make and for the good discussion. It's all been a really important part of this process that our city undertakes at regular intervals. Our next regular city council meeting will be October 3rd at 7:00 PM here in this room. Any other announcements from Counselors? Counselor Rotundo?
Just to, just to let people know the fall frolics this Sunday, as well as they're having, Ryls Side, my neighborhood, Ryls Side Day at Livingstone Park.
Thank you very much, Counselor Rotundo, two great events. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Thank you very much to Kim in the booth and Bev Cam, as always. Any please for the road?